The issue of the forestry, please, uh, take it.
What what do you feel about invite to Malala Galaba Galagor? I know you like to Malala, so I'm more of you like, I wanna, I wanna read you there, oh, I'm not lonely today.
Now, I want you, oh, no.
Well, I tell.
Run along, my hugo, what can I say?
Yeah, I support them, I support them.
I do welcome the bill.
Yeah, I support them, I'm not wrong, so I see. Katan Malala, here I am, but wow, Katan Malala, but what's your camera rule? Reange program, reange program, which I order, but what's ever, I'm not gonna go over after which is time, but what camera rule? I wanna move on.
What's about, what's about, when I get to the border, you want to speak and speak, eh? I'm gonna form a coach, he like, he like, oh, go guy, oh, move for one, one.
Yeah, level.
Yeah. Yes, proceed, welcome.
Okay, to the pillow, wish. Greetings to everybody.
Uh, Lina Lakaki, Egi Makalatiba.
My name is Egi Makalatiba.
From Refilwe.
I'm from Refilwe.
What ninety-nine?
What ninety-nine?
And I cancel our Mutupi Magena.
That's a happy dish, yeah, cancel our Mutupi Marina.
Eh, some at home, okay, that's how I live with the parliament, it really move at all.
Firstly, I would like to extend my thanks to the parliament, to the members of the parliament who are here.
Eh, parliament, they're even on Mutivi, arrive on the move at all.
Normally, we would see that on the television, but we don't see it to come into the people.
Eh, so baby, get that, I was a potato.
Secondly, I want to welcome the bill.
Eh, let's say, I beg you, lack of communication.
Another thing, okay, roll, roll, sisip, roll, si, who led you, Shannon, I bought, see, roll, roll, come, who led you, Shannon, I bought, see?
So, the parliament, eh, it's a moment, it's in worry, now, worry, feel, eh, root will, yeah, eleven hour, like, no, so, in the morning.
We only had on the eleventh hour to be precise, we only have this morning that the parliament will be in our region.
Eh, no, Ronaldo, cancel our, our, my, gather, cancel our, why, as I say, I'm only, it's a good chance.
And we do have a counselor in our world, we asking ourselves as to why such was not communicated to us by our counselor?
Eh, let's say, I beg, eh, cancel our arena, since we vote, eh, our money, go back to.
Another. Another thing is that since we voted for our counselor, we never saw here or him.
Very, yeah, God.
The name of the counselor, Mar?
Yes, Mutupi Magena, he's there with the big shirt.
What, which counselor is that one?
Mutupi Magena.
What ninety-nine?
With the. Eh, my counselor, Raymar, who won? She, I'm quite. That I was over, now, how true is this?
They said they never seen you, how true is that? Give on native, okay, can, for when I, but I think, okay, no, one.
Eh, cancel our, here, Moniaka, Ronald D. Potale.
Can we be in one meeting? You've been very good thus far, let's can disappoint, Dr. Gary.
We are still in that area without any title deed or any infrastructure, it's just us. We have been up and down in all area of Pretoria with this lady next to me. They keep on promising us. And if you want to go to the bathroom, you have to...
Not bathroom, toilet.
Toilet. Okay, we don't have bathrooms, we have toilets.
Careful, interpret correctly eh?
Toilet.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Bathroom is like very way.
Yes.
That's why, toilet.
We don't have toilets. Our toilets are far away, like in that car. During the night, we have to use the bucket. And try to cover with the towel. And if you have a constipation... When you, in the morning, when you carry that bag, we have to go there. And the children will laugh at you. And we, the water that we drink come from tanks. Sometimes we get those waters and other times, no, we don't get them. But what hurts us most is that we need a place, a land. So that we can also feel the freedom, because we never tasted, we want, we, all this time, we were living in the farms. Even now, we are old, we are still in that place, so please, government, help us to take us out from that place. Schoolchildren who are this time in grade twelve, they are up to two thousand. They don't work, they don't have employment. There is no any employment. They are with us. They smoke. I've heard another lady was talking about the police. They don't assist us at all. Even if you are sitting outside? You will see the van, when it's been called, it will come and just stop in the truck shop. And you'll see people paying some bribe in the windows. And the crime that is there... Is so high. People are fighting some... And there are also guns that people kill each other using them, right at your gate. Then you move from your bed and sleep just right on the floor to avoid the, to being shot. There is only one thing that I request. Is the place or a land. So that we can stay. So that we can have security. So that if we die... So that our children can have heritage, not under the shacks that we are in now, because they don't know where to go. Last tha- last time, there were red ants and they came and demolished. And it was the third time. We don't know, if even they can come right now while we are still here, we don't know where to go. And our leaders who are in our area. Right now, they don't care about us, they don't know. But if it's time for elections... They, they come to us. And they will give us a lot of promises. Even they al- also even promise us the air with the land. And they say, you don't, you don't, no longer, you don't even use your own expenses to, we, we will move our you ourselves. But after the election have passed... Never see them again. We'll wait for another elections in order to see them. So we request you, maybe you can help us. We've been in Pretoria and everywhere, but we don't see any action. So thank you so much. And I hope God will see us and one day we'll have some title deeds. Thank you. Thank you.
Your story is another one.
Greetings, one and all. My name is Elizabeth Siawa. Eh, as I'm saying, I'm, I'm old and I'm graining, it's because I grew up in this area, I'm now seventy-two years, growing up in this area.
Is she from?
Comes from plot thirty-four, camel kraal. Under Bronkor Sprat.
Is the name of the plot?
Camel kraal.
Camel kraal.
Yeah, go R twenty-five.
In R twenty-five. I, I don't want to spoil what already the, the, the previous speaker has spo- spoken about. What I came here for? We just having a problem of the land, ladies and gentlemen. We were very happy when we saw Mister Tulane came to, come to us eh, the previous week. Telling us that the parliament is coming to the shores of the people. I, I, um, 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 Chaperson, I don't know how many doors have knocked eh, to Pretoria. As you, as you can just imagine, we are just like this paper I'm throwing on the floor. If you can... If you can look where we are situated, it's in the mine area, and I will not be afraid to mention that. Because we are, as, we are staying there near the mines. Eh, the person who does not have money or whose pool are they in Kanan? Or those who are leading us in Kanan.
Interpreter, I warned you, ne? I warned you, you must listen carefully and interpret what they are saying, because they can hear. If you interpret thing wrongly, you will be corrected, this is what is happening.
Yeah, I don't hear properly, maybe if I can just be close to her, yeah, next to her.
Yeah, so that you can hear properly.
Wonderful.
It's better than we got.
This woman, the previous speaker, she didn't lie when she said eh, we, we received that land from two thousand and three. We were under the municipality of Kudwini in that time, eh, we were not yet under the Twane administration. As time goes on, as the owner of that land dies... In two thousand and six? We saw the Africaner eh, come to our place, and we would know that, we knew that this place were given by a black person. We refused to, to leave that place, because we told them that we know who's the owner of this land. As we continue, eh, were continuing eh, with this matter of this land... Because we ended up eh, eh, arriving in this office.
After two months.
That, that's where eh, eh, Mayor Ramohopa eh, came to us and told us that we gonna eh, see the difference in two months. Then we took six months, then we went to this office. We just wanted to know exactly who, wha- what does eh, that place belong to. When we went to the this office, we found that eh, that place has been rented by summer training. When we went to the offices of eh, Tivseting, we asked them that eh, why didn't the municipality tell us that they sold this place? We've been going to court up eh, from two thousand and three up until this day. They organized the councilors from hu- human settlement? In twenty thirteen. Those lawyers from human settles eh, meant they were with us that time. They told us our court case is now been in the held in Blumfanteen, after two weeks, they will eh, give us a response. We just eh, met them again in twenty twenty. When they came to tell us that we must eh, march and eh, 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 and go eh, eh, elsewhere. If you can have a look of, of, of that eh, march we conducted. There's no media or anybody who's having a camera like that, gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, we're just pleading. Your bill, I'm, I'm, I'm welcoming it hundred percent. We have children who are well educated. Eh, as, I, I can just mention that our children, they took them for fire training eh, 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 as we speak now. Eh, we know that eh, um, um, eh, what will happen in future is that when they want people who have certificate, they will just ignore them. Please, we... We've been reporting this problem for many years, we don't know what to do anymore. Even the provincial legislature has came here many times, there's no difference eh, with what the problem we have. When it's time for elections, they will just come to us. They want us to vote, after voting, then they stay away. As we speak, the eh, employment for EPWP in our place then... We were happy that at least our children were, were, were gonna get at least peace jobs. As I'm talking to you now, eh, it's been three months, some of them who, eh, they were working and they did not get paid. Yeah, even now staying at home. What we see working is fat alles. They take our children and promise them that they will train. Then parents will borrow money for their transport, because they were trained and... They promised to give them one thousand five hundred when they are complete to the training. Even now, those children, they got only certificates. Please, can you come to eh, plot thirty-four there in Kungwini where we stay? Maybe Kungwini will tell you eh, eh, a better story, maybe we are not telling you what's... The children are falling into the pit toilets, three of them, as we speak, they have fallen, they have died, we are pleading. Please, because they said... Everyone has a right to receive electricity, water, and sanitation, we are urging them, thank you so much. The bill, I'm supporting it hundred percent.
Is, is just sympathizing with you, Mayor Elizabeth. And then, oh, amaka la hori, now it's almost thirty years in this democracy.
Now he's just worried, that is now thirteen years.
And then we still have people like you who are living in those conditions. Okay.
Yes, I'm clear about that.
Okay. Awuti, over to you.
Greetings, one and all. My name is Tabo Mshilo. I'm eh, here with the eh, developers of, of Moliko. I'm a secretary of Samkomo One. Oh, sorry, Waton, One. Watseventy-six. I'm very happy to meet with the parliamentarians today. Because we need you and we can't reach you. Even if sometimes we reach them, they just eh, listen to us, but they don't fulfill what they are supposed to be fulfilling. I wish if they were, they, you have come to the village... Sitting underneath the tree... Where you will not use even your laptops. Writing in hand... Eh, biting, being bitten, bitten by the mosquitoes. So that they can understand this condition we are living under. I'm staying in a very old village. It's very old. There's eh, a, a word which eh, that it's been used as informal settlement. As a black person, you will always be eh, 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 under the informal settlement. Then maybe you will then go to Santin after you have been eh, in, in, in eh, human settlement. I haven't seen any eh, white person staying in an informal settlement. There's no one. The parliament, we are pleading to you to bring us eh, awareness programs in our village.
Especially for our youth.
We understand that you can't create eh, jobs, enough jobs for everyone. But we, our youth eh, they complete eh, the school, and then they just eh, eh, sit at home doing nothing. They are using eh, illicit drugs. They are also involved in doing crime. Eh, and also alcohol abuse. We have eh, a police. We have the department of firefighting. I understand that eh, the eh, important job that the police needs to do. In our communities. Is to ensure that there's no crime activities taking place. We have a problem that we don't receive any help from police, there must be crime first, then they will come to, to help us. Of which they need to, to have awarenesses, and their vans need to be around, eh, roving, roving around, so that eh, the, the protection can be visible. It's like with the fire department, they also need to eh, make the eh, awarenesses, eh, so, eh, they mustn't come only when there's fire, they must teach people before the fire comes.
Arna title deed eh, more play can you roll?
If we want to protect the vegetation, then eh, we need eh, to have those awarenesses, because the problem that we have, we have a problem of water shortage, and eh, the water, eh, the problem also of eh, fires as this, it's been explained. We also have a problem of floods. They say eh, we, we won't get services, because eh, the municipality from Twane, they say we don't have a title deed. The government from Twane eh, must do like this, all those who don't have title deeds. When it's time for voting. They must say, those who do not have... They mustn't vote. They just have to put us aside and just ignore us. Because we are just like ordinary people. As I, I've just explained that we have a youth that doesn't work, as we speak now, we have fields there in our, wherever I stay. Eh, we, 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 we now eh, gonna have a problem in five years' time eh, because people, they take eh, the eh, 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 the, the, eh, the, the trees there, they cut trees, and with, but during that time, we will not have any eh, 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 field anymore. So I'm pleading to the government to eh, provide us with our awarenesses. Just come to our communities. We mustn't see you only when there's time to vote. We want to see when votes... After we have eh, eh, talked to you and you've seen with the environment that we're living under. Please do the follow-ups. We don't have eh, water in voters. Let me say the whole of Amanskrall. It doesn't have eh, a clean water supply.
It's about five years.
It's now five years. People that have been vaccinated in Amanskrall drinking this eh, filthy water. How do you vaccinate a person who drinks dirty water? Please, government. We ask the government to come to our place and just have a look of what the problems that we are complaining about. Let the meetings like this one. Eh, let, let be, let these meetings not be the, only the meetings for compliance.
Man, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine.
The issue in dispute, Buti? What is the issue in dispute between one and the interpreter, if I may ask?
No, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine, my brother, it's fine, it's okay. Okay, 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 it's fine.
Ramuko, it's just that maybe when now, now, he's using a certain language than the actual thing that you are saying. Mara, obulala the same thing that you are saying?
Ah, I know.
Okay, let's proceed.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, really.
Next batch, eh, my last batch, the fight. Next batch, my last batch, the fight. First ten, if little thirty two low, there will be a second round.
Eh, si tala oguti, si zoniga za abanya yituba.
At least so that we can move fast, colleagues. Do langfaz, re-proceed. Do langfaz. I wanna the exigency more, I wanna the exigency please. Give public participation, I wanna the exigency, ne? And let's just be tolerant to each other. You have been so good since we started. Can I plead with the speaker so that some people don't become intolerant? Stick on your five minutes, don't repeat yourself. If things have been raised, they've been raised, they are the same, we are going to attend to them. Agir, you are bringing new issues. The other speakers, when they were speaking here, you were clapping hands to say they are raising your sentiments, majority of you. Yeti Baba Tula, Regent Seven, you are so disciplined, we are going to proceed that way. Can we proceed, Buti?
Dumela, good day, Che.
I'll greeting, greetings to you, Che.
From Refilo at ninety-nine. At ninety-nine.
At ninety-nine.
Yes.
See, I'm not going to waste your time.
There is only two issues, it's only two minutes, simple.
Two issues that won't even take two minutes? I think, I'd like to thank as nationally how you, that you came here.
Even if Ruth will as I should notice, but it's fine, we welcome you. This amendment, Elena, I support her. Yes. And the crucial issue.
I would like that you must note it.
Uh, Che, this thing, yeah, age. Kupala, lay reconsidered, please.
You asked what?
Age, age.
I would like that you must consider the age.
Uh, cause the world always, I wanna let me be regular, but where are eighteen to thirty-five? Which means Rena over thirty-five.
The issue of age between eighteen and thirty-five, we are now going to have problems because we at the age of thirty-five, we don't have to grow up.
So please, can you pass this message to the president, please?
Because now current is crippling us, we have to do everything.
Thank you.
Dumela.
I greet you. My name is?
Slepe Slepe.
Slepe Slepe.
Yes.
I'm from what, ninety-nine? Under councillor, Mabena?
Uh, from the organization EFF.
From the organization, Kuzoko EFF?
Yes. Uh, nagabatlo tacha on the element of environment. Whereby environment, it consists of some element, social issues.
By where environment, it has to be used by extruders?
Uh, kibato tacha, uh, element number one, yeah, environment in terms of social.
I want to touch the element of environmental about social?
Whereby the previous speaker, Oblet Gatawazadi, substance abuse and other.
Where the previous speaker spoke about substance abuse?
And then whereby, uh, Nelele challenge, uh, noise pollution. And also a waste pollution. And then this caused by because.
Because we are so congested.
Yes, and then, and then, uh, regard, uh, cause Rena go, place Rena go Refilo, geographically, move the place.
Because we at Refilo, we are staying in the farms, geographically, we are staying in farms. Will us request the government to expropriate so that we can get residential places? Because we grew up from the back rooms, actually, it's not back rooms, it's back shot in our premises.
And then, and tomorrow, uh, it's long happy, reviewing, of which we don't work.
Because currently, you are not working, you will request that we get a break?
Getotako another element, yeah, politics it are, Rena.
Touch on our politics? The office which we gather that has to help us during?
As the office of the speaker.
As the office of the speaker?
Uh, even previous, uh, uh, mole, the Obleta, are, 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 message, you, got three seconds.
Because some, one of the speakers, the previous speaker, said they got this message in three seconds.
And, and then it caused us, cause Honabano are reading any report in terms of the old committees who we are halal, we always, we always pointing fingers to our councillors. Because we want, I guess, can we, everything, where are the old committees?
Currently, you are pointing fingers at our old committees, you don't know what the councillors are doing.
So it shows where the office of the speaker is not active. Getobalela ka, another element of environment of which is culture and tradition.
I'm going to speak about the another element of culture and tradition?
We are not liberated as the Sangomas.
Uh, the traditional Sangomas, we are not liberated?
Cause, rare restrictive.
We've been restricted?
For, to achieve participation, especially, Oka, Miria, Nayarena.
That participation, where we can get our helps, our traditional helps? Where we complain about the wildfires?
Rena is black people, who were in touch with the nature?
Because previously, when this fire, a wildfire just exploded, we as a black people?
Were in touch with the nature?
Because we used to go out as traditional healers, traditional leaders with other people and go and speak with our ancestors. The ancestors of fire? Of the land? Of water? Of, uh, spiritual, uh, Sangomas?
So, uh, members of the parliament?
We request.
Passes and tabaya restriction of land.
Please, this restriction of land must be passed.
So that we can participate.
It must be approved so that we can participate?
Uh, fruitful for the economy of South Africa, if might not be so. Uh, getotaka, the next element of environment of which is natural?
I'll come to the element of natural? Premier mine?
Uh, premier mine, so, cause by the time, na na roho la, na oneli di apple, co, citrus fruit, ne, di le tem.
When we grew up, there were, uh, apple cores, uh, wild fruits were there. Because of this, they destroyed some of those things, where we don't even benefit. Currently, we don't have tax, they have, they don't exist anymore. Like paps, type of fishes are no more.
So, their multinational companies, they are costing too much.
Companies, they are really costing us too much. The reason is they're going to be the environment of economy? Due to lack of land? Be black people?
Are sa participator in terms of wildlife activities? Are sa participator in terms of agriculture? Are sa participator in terms of agriculture?
So we don't even participate more, uh, culture?
So totally the element that you give a deal, because I got a Rinala fast.
All these elements that I've met, I have already mentioned, we don't have lack of land.
Okay, right, we will support the bill as long as it's procreate the land for equal use.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Elvis Malimela, a qualified public administrator. Uh, but on this particular occasion, I'll be representing the farmers of Falbang five double one J R. Of what one oh two under the hardworking leader, uh, councillor Vus Mabena. Uh, Che, I think it's very important for us to understand why we are here today. Uh, because we are going to save each other's time if we do so. Uh, Che, allow me to put it on record that, uh, we are in favor of the proposed bill. And then, uh, we will state the reasons why we are in favor of this bill. Okay, the first reason is that, uh, the challenge we are having with the current bill is that it does not recognize communal land. Communal land.
It doesn't support communal land, where are you getting it from?
The, the, the previous bill.
Oh, not the current one?
No, not the, not the proposed one. Or at least give a definition.
The current act as it is. You should be saying the current act as it is.
The current act as it is does not. But the proposed one does, yes, hence we are supporting the bill. Okay, uh, secondly, uh, the current bill does not recognize open air fires and the proposed bill does. Open welt fires. Open welt fires. Okay, uh, thirdly, the welt fire was defined, uh, thirdly, ma'am, how the welt fires was defined? In the primary act was too slim. And the proposed amendment outlines a broader explanation. And then, uh, lastly. In the current bill. Uh, public entities, uh, state-owned enterprises. Uh, do not comply with the current provisions. And then now, in the proposed bill. The owner of the designated entity will have to join a registered fire protection association. Uh, on a rebel, Che, I can assure you. Through this bill. Compliance and enforcement, uh, measures will be strengthened. I so wish that this bill can be passed into law, thank you.
Greetings to the members of the parliament who are in front of us. Martin Chaba. Let me introduce myself, I'm Malisela Martin Bang.
Martin Chaba.
Chaba.
From what ninety-nine?
I'm from what ninety-nine?
In, in region five. In region five.
So I'm from region five?
Yes. So, um, yeah, uh, Tavelamolau, because, like, the place, in Kudi Vah as drift.
I'm greatly welcoming this bill because I'm from the farmers of Kamel.
Di Vah as drift.
Vah as drifts. Ba, Vah and drift, oh, okay.
Yeah, no, sorry, you can also hear the pronunciation of the, uh, di Vah as drift, go to the place.
Every councillor after the election, what they do is they bring the T L B, digging holes whereby will be left in the mud and after that the councillor relocate and stay in town. I'm going to give you one example, I'm staying in Hamanskrall. In R one O one. Those who are travelling with, you'll realise that there is a path where you cannot use it because there's a pipe there. The councillor already entered into a contract, eh into an agreement with a contractor that us as a community, we don't even know whereby that it causing itself is causing a delay of traffic. Secondly, my plea is. We are not against a development, we are actually supporting a development. But recognise as the land buyers or as the local residents because none eh is allowed to come to your house and do as it pleases him or her. Eh councillors who have been busy, together with investors, this is the announcement that we want to bring to you that J R ninety ninety-two is already claimed. As much as you refuse eh us development, saying that we are non-title holders, just stay there, even that and jubilee, whatever that you are trying to do, you stop right there. Please pass, pass this message from your level downwards to tell these councillors, not inform them, that they must stop this thing of them coming with eh T L Bs to us.
I was killed. I was killed. Eh each and every municipality has got a relationship with traditional leaders. And then, you know why I'm trying to raise this? Because I can see it's an issue of relations between you and the municipality. Have you ever made efforts to reach out to see the mayor or the speaker for a meeting so that you resolve all these issues that you are raising here with us? Have you done that before?
No.
You see now, so there are issues that parliament from Cape Town won't solve that are local, that yourself must solve amongst yourself. Because that this eh eh Traditional and Coesian Leadership Act, including the Municipal Structures and Systems Act, they create for that thing here intergovernmental relations. My, my advice to you, don't wait for the municipality to come to you. You need to go to the municipality offices. Demand to talk to the mayor or the speaker. Because that's how the A G R F framework says. I'm interjecting you because the issues that you are raising, you are raising a relationship between yourself and the city, and the city. And if you don't go to them, they won't know what are your issues. Anyway eh the M M C is here, I believe she's noting that, but also try to reach out. I'm doing that so that I bring you to the issue at hand that we focus on what we are here for, but they've noted your concerns. Yeah, well now you've got a lot of issues to raise with the municipality, so reach out and go to the municipality. Even post this meeting, yes councillor eh Mateve, you can whisper to her, she can facilitate that appointment. Osha apone?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your understanding. I want us to move, I want us to move, ne? Some of you are diabetic. So help us to conclude this meeting, ne? Sure, sure. Proceed, Sisi.
Greetings.
Legay.
How are you? My name is Mpo Kanyani. From Valmansdal, what ninety-nine? I also have some grievances or complaint. It's very difficult, my fellows. We have been staying in Valmansdal since twenty-ten. Drinking dirty water from the tanks. We don't have electricity. We don't have proper roads. When it's rainy, it's worse that even the vehicles are unable to travel nor to use the road. We only have the clinic which is very far in Pyramid. Eh Valmansdal doesn't have a school, we only have the school in Pyramid. It has been eh long that we having this problem or this outcry.
Eh, thank you.
Thank you. Greetings. I'm Melita from Extension Five. Melita, Extension Five. From Rifilo, my councillor is in Tatemutchupi. What ninety-nine? My problem is that we are just sitting there at on our own. We have been staying there for seven years. And what I would like to plead with eh our elders or our leaders is that is there any way when relocation is being done? The first set of batch of people that have been relocated to somewhere, then the other people be left so that we don't have additional people that will be adding to the informal settlements. Thirdly, that I'm, I'm really pleading to our councillor for equality, for equal treatment. We really love and appreciate our councillor, but it's so difficult for some of us to see him, whereas it's easy for the other people to see him. He must remember the promise that he made, that he will be working-handed love with the street committees, something that he said before, but practically, we don't see that happening. You'd, you'd be surprising a person approaching you with some notes that are written on the book saying that this is what the councillor is saying, at that time, you know nothing nor heard anything from the councillor. My plea is the issue of age restriction eh restriction. My plea is that can't we be considered even at the age of fifty? Be given that opportunity to can participate in any project so that we are able to settle our bills nor maintain our commitments such as burial eh organizations, we at least will be able to pay them. Because if you can eh see or if you can look at anything, the requirement is metric as an entry equivalent, that is something that we don't have some of us. Please, please, my plea is that please prioritize that so that we can also be accommodated as young eh older people. Thank you. I greet you all people from the parliament. My name is Margaret Muing.
From Hamanskrall in Rensh Town. Geta mayale, Mandebelle tribe.
I'm with them, I'm, I'm accompanied by the Mandebelle tribe. I'm from Kubil Chambers Commerce.
Eh more Berekanka, funding the small economic retailers. Not Baba Rukang, eh all the, the, the common, the, the retailers.
Baba Tlewak the retailers. All the people? Who falls under the business? Business at large?
So eh what I can say?
We have lot of, what I want to say, we have lot of farmers in Hamanskrall, right?
And then those farmers taku Hamanskrall.
By Limboko Hamanskrall, most of them. They've abandoned their farms. Because they don't know where to go, where to knock, which door to knock at. When they want to restart farming or plowing with their farms.
Yes, and another thing, barikisa di farms tabona in, in small portions.
Another thing, they are selling their farms in small portions. I think it's much better for the government to come and educate them or enlighten them about their farms, how to plow, how to restart and plow with their farms, rather than abandoning them. Currently we are speaking about field fire wildfires?
And then those are caused mostly by drivers, Baba smoker. They just throw their cigarette setting on beside the road, which causes the fire. And another issue eh na le yonah?
And another issue eh that we had?
Que the foreigners that we have in our community.
And our community are struggling about the place, the, the land.
Anywhere they want and where, anywhere they pleases.
The foreigners will come, invade the land, establish their own church and lascivia flex day.
And then after that they perform their rituals, monacheng, because by, most usually whereby they end up lighting fire eh long hurbyan is escalator to such other areas.
And their churches are established and they form their churches in the field where they practice their rituals, but at the end of the day, they also do light that place, the place will be on fire.
And we've got the Nigerians.
Who come to our country.
They've got lots of money that they are making in South Africa. And then they end up buying the vulnerable South Africans.
They don't have money.
Eh this issue eh kibala langaana is happening mostly in Bosplas West, in Hamanskrall.
This issue is happening in Hamanskrall Bosplas, where I reside.
They go there, buy your regana, ha, small portion of land, a lot of money.
I won't go to their country Zimbabwe. And they won't sell me a piece of land, so.
Or they are selling their land for cheaper price.
I want the government must intervene here and enlighten our people, our South Africans, that they are selling our valuable land at a cheaper price.
And then more long hur land there, na, ikare produce it, ah, the most manufacturers. So long hur we can, we can end up opening factories, so long hur they are, they are, they are creating job creation for the South Africans.
And our land, it's so rich that it can bring money into our country and eh promote our economy and create jobs for those who are unemployed.
The companies eh 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 agriculture, they be next to the communities.
I like that the offices must be established, agriculture offices, where people wants to register their, their business, the offices must be nearer to the community.
And then another thing, haba kobeledi workshops.
And another thing, workshops must be introduced. And our community will attend those workshops and be taught or trained how to farm.
After training them how to farm, they must train them how to manufacture. Because from our crops, we can manufacture juice, we can manufacture anything that we want.
And.
Que kopa hori eh lady communities, arebe rekisa ngali government.
I will also request our community to work hand in glove with the government. The company in which eh I, I am under, it falls under, how the economic development?
Live eh family tree holdings.
Live and the family tree holdings.
So we helping the South Africans, Baba rekisa ngoma keisheneng, everything, the, while na link the back room, whatever business that you eh you are running, we helping you, hor oho ne, hor, hor yuhudisa, lerunama South Africans, rehona kusapotana, so that we grow our businesses.
We help people to grow their businesses, even when you own an, a back room where you have established your business, we help you. Also help them.
Trade dealings is everywhere, it's everywhere and then ke, ke, loli encourage ya hori, don't wait for the government to, to, to take out.
I'll encourage you to work hand in glove with us, don't wait for the government to take out hunger out of your places.
Start your business. We will come to you. We will assist you, hor how you go about, ka business ya how, hor kobeledi growth.
We are going to help you. Take poverty out of South Africa.
Well, well now, before you leave sisters, Mpo, I think when aliwa, now you need to approach all these local municipalities. On the north west side. Approach the city of Swane. Nice programs that can empower the people. Utsanso, reach out.
I greet you. I am from Hamanskrall, under the leadership of Chief Kekana. I support the bill. So I'll request the government to assist us, help us with the issue of eh wildfire. We want places, fields where we can plow. So that we can plow and get crops and even we do our own work. So that we can plow. There are no, Mama Kekana. We don't have places where we can plow or utilize those lands. Our problems that we have. Under the leadership of eh Casey Kekana. We don't have title deeds, even our chief does not have that power. We had some lands that the municipality claimed that it belongs to them. What we knew that our great-grandfathers claimed that those lands belong to us, we tried. We tried to go to the municipality offices. Went to the rural settlement. Land reform. Went to the agriculture offices. Currently as a land owner, the case is under the land claims. Land rent is now busy with our lands. We are kindly requesting for our.
Because no repower lepa gidi councillor.
Currently. So currently the councillors are now influencing the kings. When a king or chief speaks, then the councillor will say, this is the municipality place. So currently we are requesting, humbly requesting that let's work with you. If we can get them and develop. Because we then develop Alibilo, we don't have our title deeds.
Title deeds are now nineteen sixteen and then year nineteen twenty-four.
Our ti, our list documents of twenty sixteen and nineteen ninety-four. We've been asking, who are those doc, in whom's possession are those documents? They'll tell you that is from so-and-so, so we want those documents so that we can own. Currently there's nothing that we can do, I requested the parliament to assist us. That's all.
Can I get the other ones that I said, they must wait, can they come so that we finish up? The last group, ne? Is the last group, ne? And then little, little, then, you don't want to repeat, ne? You're bringing new things. Let's go ahead, repeat. We can do it quietly, ne? I think this is my last group, ne? And then can I plead with those of you who are in the queue, be straight to the point so that we finish, ne? But I'm not restricting your right to speak.
Let me greet you all. I greet you all in the wonderful name of Father Jesus Christ, amen. My name is Pastor Modise. I am from Hamanskrall. A place called Suruman Ridge. Under His Majesty Chief Casey Kekan.
All right, yeah, hello. There's a devil interpreter, eh? Zulu and devil. They want the Zulu and in devil interpreter, can we get that person to stand up?
Wasn't the devil interpreter arranged for today?
Are you interpreting devil yourself? So, Mr. Ruti, proceed, anne?
Thank you. Okay, first thing that I want to say is that um.
Even my group here from the interpretation services. We respect the decorum of the house, let's give the Ruti an opportunity to talk to us.
Yeah, I want, I just want to say something before I get to the bone of contention.
Yeah, I just want to say something before I get to the bone of contention. You see, what you are hearing here from different people. Which some of those issues are actually not parliamentary issues. It's because of one thing. The councillors are not saving the duties of their offices to the communities. Because a councillor is a special purpose vehicle for the community. To take community problems to their respective authorities. But it's not happening because councillors are not there for the communities. That's the reason people come here and they just beat about the bush and they just disrupt the program because their concerns are not adhered to by the councillors. And I am sure the parliament knows about this. This is not just happening here. Everywhere you go, you find people hijacking the agenda because of one thing. The issues that are supposed to be addressed by the councillors are going to be addressed here at the parliament. So I am pleading with the councillors today. You are there for a purpose. You have to serve that purpose as it has been imparted in you. And then we will eradicate issues like this to take long time discussing the issues of roads, the issues of electricity. This is the issues of the councillors that they must discuss with the communities. Now, back to the bone of contention. The bill. I've went through this bill. And I've realized that the parliament is striving. To reduce the failed fire incidents. You see, that alone, it don't be enough. You need to have a robust system that you can put in place. So that you can be able to impart the knowledge to the communities about the impact of fire. The community, they don't understand the impact of fire. That is why even if when they light a gas stove, they don't consider the safety elements. I've already buried a mother and a son who has been consumed by the gas. So the impact of fire starts with a small spark. A spark of a stick of a match. Or a cigar. They call it stombi. When you see the fire that has been caused by that small spark. You won't believe that this is the fire that was caused by a stick. So our fields are consumed by the fire because of lack of knowledge. And fire, it causes an impact on our food security. Imagine when a field of cabbages and spinach is on fire. It means we are losing food. But it's because of people are not educated about fire. That's why today you brought the bill that we need to support. To some people, it has not yet ringed into their mind. They don't actually understand why they are here. Because you are telling them about the fire, you're telling them about the fishery, you're telling them about the environment. But you haven't workshop them about those things before. So it means they are only here to support the bill. And that's the reason when they do their submissions, their submissions, they fall off from the bone of contention agenda. So we support the bill. Because we don't want fire in our land. We don't want pollution in our seas and waters. But this should be a special education that needs to be imparted to the communities. Because if I'm fishing at somewhere, at the river. So I'm going to fish until to the last fish. And it will be the kind of fish that is not yet known here in our country. So I am saying simply. You are talking about lots of acts, lots of bills, lots of sections, but it doesn't mean anything to the community. That's why the community are saying to you, we want land. Because this clause, they cannot be applied without land. So provide the land first to the community and then regulate the community in terms of articles and in terms of acts and chapters and so on. So I'm telling you, these papers today, they will be making fire to cook. Those who don't have newspapers, they will make fire with these papers. Because they don't understand what it entails exactly about their lives. I saw you tried to convert it to Sisulu, to whatever, but remember that here you're speaking with a community who've got a division of mindsets. So we want to be surprised when youth or a group of children start fire somewhere and run away. Now, parliament must introduce the programs. Bring forth the programs of skills development, the programs of education so that people. Because every time when the parliament comes, they come with a bill. I have attended another session, I think it's a year or two year back, somewhere in Khobalesdal. And it was also about the land amendment bill. Every bill speaks about the land. But the land is not dishing to the people. So the land is not working for the people because the parliament is holding the land with them. And then when they hold the land, they regulate the land with the communities that are staying in that land. So I'm pleading with the parliament today. Give the people the land. And you will see, the problems will be automatically eradicated. And your efforts to try to reduce the impacts of fire causes. Will be overwhelmed by your communities. I thank you.
Really, Mr. Root. We are also learning a lot. Empowering.
Greetings. How are you? My name is Naniki Hatle. I'm coming from Wat 99 in Rafile. We are very happy to see the parliament in our presence.
And I support the document.
Can I please say some, a few things? We've been knocking from door to door, seeking for assistance, but we couldn't get. We couldn't get the answers. That's the reason why we are bringing forth all our grievances in your presence, the ones that we are experiencing as communities. My list of grievances is not that long. First is school transport. I've been relocated from the informal settlement since 2016. 2016. My primary issue is the issue of the distance. Lenders are traveling too far to school. And there's a vacant land where school can be erected?
2018, I wrote the petition. The city is ready to build. The other one is saying we don't have water. So parliament, we are happy.
We are happy for you being here. Please assist us with the issue of the learner's transport.
Our kilometer, we reached 4.8 kilometers.
At that time, we had 4.8 kilometers.
I can say good luck. 2018, they relocated Baba and Happy, the backroom dwellers. That's when we reached more than 5 kilometers. It was 5.1 kilometers.
Then, after the additional of the other people that were relocated added to us, then we were able to reach 5.1.
5.1 kilometers.
Kilometers.